Here.
Commissioner D'Teen.
Here.
Commissioner McDowell.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Hill.
Here. Pastor Langley?
The Bible says that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Paraphrase: right doing lifts a community up; wrongdoing tears it down. And that might seem so obvious as to hardly be worth stating, but I think what the Bible is getting at is that God has hardwired the universe to reward virtue. And so, among other things that some of us pray for you who are in leadership is that you will be virtuous. And that's how I'd like to pray tonight. Father, for the sake of our community, I want to ask that you would bless the elected officials and the city employees who are charged with leading us, and grant them the virtues, the public virtues, that will lift up our city. Help them to be honest, help them to be hardworking, help them to be vigilant, help them to have a servant's heart, help them to be humble enough to hear from others and learn from others, help them to not grow weary in well-doing. Public service can be wearisome, but we pray that you would give them sufficient reason for joy and satisfaction in their work, that they keep on keeping on. And then, too, Lord, I want to pray for those, maybe not in this room, but who are regularly in harm's way to protect our community, and ask that you would surround them with your arms, keep them safe, that they might keep us safe. We commit the evening and its agenda to you, and pray that the net result of the deliberations tonight will be a better Zion. In Christ's name, amen.
Please stand and join me in the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have agenda changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing concerning the intent of the city to sell not to exceed $3.7 million in general obligation, refunding bonds, alternate revenue source. I declare the public hearing open, and I will turn the public hearing over to Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just a, I can't remember what the reading was, stand for, being a Bond Something Notification Act. But we had council approval on going out to market for these bonds, and then the next step is, within a period of time, we have to have a public hearing just for public comment, concerns, questions, should there be any before we move forward in adopting or doing any of the refinancing. So that's the, that's what the purpose of this public hearing is for, should there be any public comment.
Do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions?
David, this property is currently for sale.
It's owned by the city currently, but, yes.
Currently for sale.
It is, it's currently for sale for any, any interested parties.
How are we marketing this property?
We actually have contacts in with a couple of different brokers that we'll probably be looking at proposals for. We wanted to get the agreement with Retail Strategies in place first, and have them kind of do the first round of kind of national marketing. And we met some, some brokers and national brokers and everything, so the, that's in place. The next step is now to get the brokers for the property, which we're in the process of gathering some good names and references for that. So it's not publicly listed yet, other than on a couple of, like, just public information websites, but...
I'll just say publicly, it's for sale.
Do any of the members of the public have any comments they'd like to make? Questions you'd like to ask? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number six is citizens' comments. Before we get into the citizens' comments, I'd like to make some comments, and I thought about this, and I wasn't sure if I wanted to say anything, but I do. My wife and I were in California visiting our grandchildren. We were coming home yesterday, and we're listening to the radio, and they were interviewing a gentleman from Charlottesville, Virginia, and they asked him why he was there. And the gentleman said, he said he was there for three reasons. One of them was for white males in the United States and how they're losing their standing. The second reason, which I didn't understand at all, he said he was there for free markets. But the third reason he was there, he said he was there to kill Jews. Now, I find that reprehensible, and it really, really bothers me. And I just have to, I've got a public forum here, and I need to say that for my behalf. I find that reprehensible. I find something that just about made me sick to my stomach when I saw a Nazi swastika sewn to an American flag. And I think of all the people that my father, my uncles, my aunts fought in World War II against that precise and direct hatred. And I think it is just completely out of character for this country. I understand people have a right to free speech, but I don't understand the hate that is involved in some, with some of these people. And I just think that it was a very terribly unfortunate incident, and a terribly unfortunate way that some individuals in this country lived their lives, and I just, I needed to express that for myself. The...
Thank you.
The, we have a, Mr. Clyde McElmore?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Good that you just spoke on that. How'd you know I was coming with this? Tonight, I wonder, are we all in a time machine going back in the time? Today, the President of the United States blamed Clarksville on both sides. Both sides, really, for exercising your rights? Y'all stood and recited the Pledge of Allegiance, this last sentence, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Liberty and justice for all, really? Heather Hayes was exercising her right when this man drove his car into a crowd. Not only did the leader of the KKK make a statement today that he glad the girl died during the protest, then you wonder why I'm upset. I really wonder what kind of slave I would be. I'd be a dead one, a beat one, a two toes from running off. After visiting slave castles in West Africa and going door, going through the door with no return, I personally don't think I would have ever made it on the ship. They would have killed my ass before we got to the sea. Liberty and justice for all does not, does any, does not include people who look like me, people who think like Heather Hader. All over this country, many have died at the hands of injustice. Jamari Robinson, killed in August 2016, shot 76 times by the U.S. Marshals. He was handcuffed and then dragged down the flight of stairs, even though he had already died, they shot him again. You get upset when I say black lives matter, but all lives came out of the chill black lives matter.
Item number seven is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on August 1st, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on August 1st, 2017, at 8:02 p.m. Bills, Dodgers 127013 through 127147 drawn on First Merit Bank, total $237,785.25.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is considering passing ordinance as follows. 8A is amending Zion Municipal Code, Section 94-355, rates established, service inside the city, and Section 94-356, water service outside the city. Second reading, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is, we talked about this in the last couple of meetings. This is just the code change to reduce the rate per 1,000 gallons by 10 cents, both internally and externally, based on the reduction from the Lake County Public Park District.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll move to approve this ordinance.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine is discussion authorization and approval. 9A is consider zoning dock at 17Z-5, requesting a zoning change for, from residential R-30 to highway business, HB for property located at 5621 Route 173, as petitioned by J. Brick Paving and Landscaping, per Director Ianson. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. J. Brick Paving and Landscaping is seeking a zoning change for 5621 Route 73 from R-30 to highway business. This property was annexed into the city in 1997 as R-30 per city ordinance. J. Brick Paving purchased a property in 2016 with the intent to rezone and request a special use permit to use as a contractor yard for his landscape business. At the August 3rd, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting, they voted to approve the zoning change.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the request for zoning change.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion?
At the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing was Irene and Joseph Hatcher present.
Yes, they were.
So they had a chance to voice their concern?
They did, and their son did on their behalf, and when the meeting was over, they said they were happy with the results.
If we have questions about the site plan, do we ask those questions now before we make the zoning change, or do we wait for the special use permit and the variances?
This is just the zoning change from R-30 through HB.
Right, but I'm not sure I want to make the zoning change until I got any questions that we might have answered on what's going to go on the property, because once we make the zoning change, then we have a...
Then it's HB.
Yeah, so how do we do this?
Is that removing the special use permit?
I don't know if it's this...
Because that's the next...
I know, but I don't want to change the zoning until I know whether I want to do the special use permit and do the variance. I don't know how to do this.
I believe, Mr. McGee, I believe, Council for J., the applicant is present here. The Council would like to address both matters simultaneously. Do you have any objection?
No.
No?
Do any of the commissioners have any questions on the site plan? We had a, I guess, a couple of months ago, we had a gentleman come in, in here, that it took him almost a year to get his site plan through, and the other, a very similar facility on Green Bay Road, right around the corner from this, and I guess, I don't, is there, is there going to be screening?
There will be screening, yes.
And is it, it doesn't show up on the site plan much, is there...
Should have a green screening.
Yeah.
I just see that on the, that's on the west side, right?
I don't know what this is.
There's fencing in front. It'll be a combination of fencing and landscape screening.
Is there anything out front? I don't see any screening at all out front off of 173.
Screening off of 173 is not contemplated at this time, because the house and the garage are, they're quite a distance back from the, from the road, but, I mean, that's something, if that's something the city would like, that, that can be done. It's not part of the, this particular plan, but it can be.
My concern is that there are a number of these types of facilities, there's a couple on Wadsworth Road in particular, that, they look horrible from the road. They just look horrible, and I, I don't want this to look horrible, and this is our one shot at, at trying to get it right.
Sure.
Can we approve this with the...
With conditions? The special use, which is part and parcel of this, was approved with several conditions.
Right.
The Council obviously has the, it's the Council's desire to incorporate additional conditions, and that's within the special use, this is strictly zoning.
Can, can we, can we approve this contingent upon getting a full landscape plan, a screening plan?
I would suggest that that should continue, table, continue it to another day, because that has another special use. One of the conditions of the special use was that it comply with all current city codes and requirements. Director Ianson, is there anything right now that would require a screening or fencing as the mayor is?
Yeah, the contractor yard needs to be screened either naturally or with fence, one of the, one of the other.
One person screening is another person's not screening. We had the trouble on that with the recycling place on Lewis Avenue, and according to them, it was screened.
Right.
And it looked horrible.
Well, I think that it's, reading the, looking at the layout here, the, the yard and everything, the proposed fencing closes all of them, but what, what type of fencing are, is being proposed? Is it, is it going to be a wooden fence? Is it going to be a chain link with, you know, a plastic screening inserted in between?
Let me, let me bring, my clients, the owners, Javier Huerta and Jesus Maldonado are here, they can better address the specifics, so.
That might clear up some things, if we know what kind, what kind of fencing it is.
Yeah, my name is Jesus Maldonado, living through the turn of Chapel Street, Waukegan, Illinois, and I'm one of the owners of the property. And actually, according with the drawing, the, the site plan here, we have, we're going to do a fencing from the garage, garage and house, line with the garage and house, towards the backyard with all the trucks and trailers, we're going to have parking all the time.
What, what, what type of fence is?
It's going to be a wood fence.
How high?
Eight footers. Depends on what the city requires, higher wise.
Oh, eight is, eight is high as well.
I'm sorry?
Eight is as high as we can go by car.
Okay. And this is an eight-foot ceiling here?
Slightly higher.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? We can put this in the...
That would be in the special use, not in the zoning.
We have a motion and a second?
For rezoning.
For the rezoning. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine B is consider zoning dock at 17Z-6, requesting a special use permit to operate a contractor storage yard for the purpose of operating a landscape business for property located at 5621 Route 173, as petitioned by J. Brick Paving and Landscaping, per Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Your Honor. J. Brick Paving and Landscaping is seeking a special use permit for a contractor storage yard for the purpose of operating a landscape business located at 5621 Route 173. This storage yard would be strictly for issues of storing equipment and materials and will not be open to the public. In addition, he's requesting that can continue to allow the use for the single-story residence located on the property. At the August 3rd, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting, they voted to approve the special use with conditions. Meet any and all city codes currently in effect, allow the use of the single-story residence, no bulk storage of hazard materials, no above-ground or below-ground fuel storage, no compost storage.
Is there a motion?
Do you want to incorporate the...
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait, I'll wait till after the motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would like to, I guess, I don't know if I can propose it, or I can't move it, but that the, the conditions include a fence, an eight-foot fence, as outlined in the site plan, and it needs to be an eight-foot fence that is, I don't know how you would say it, that you can't see through.
Opaque.
Opaque, you can't, I don't want a split, an eight-foot split rail fence. It's not what we're looking for. And I would add, I would...
Who made the motion?
Add that here.
Add that, the site plan includes screening using an eight-foot fence that is opaque.
Okay, that's added to the conditions. Does that meet with your approval?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. And I guess, is, is it understood that piles of stuff won't be higher than eight feet?
That'd be a pretty big pile.
It could be a big pile. You can have some big piles. We still got one more on here. We still got one more on here.
Item 9C is consider zoning dock at 17Z-7, requesting a variance for Section 102-202, parentheses, for to locate an emergency backup generator on the front side of the building for property of 3140 16th Street, as petitioned by Cancer Treatment Centers of America, for Director Ianson. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Cancer Treatment Center of America is seeking a variance from Section 102-202-4 to locate an emergency backup generator on the front side of the building, located at 3140 16th Street. They would like to install an emergency generator next to the existing utilities, which are currently located in front of the building. Standby generator has an insulated cabinet to control the decibel level. In addition, CTHC is planning to plant pushes to screen the generator from the streets. At the August 3rd, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting, they voted to approve the variance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9D, tabulation of bids, 2017 HMA surface removal and replacement program, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have are the bid tabulations for the 2017 street patching program. Staff request and recommend awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, J. Johnson Paving Company of Arlington Heights, Illinois, and a amount of $76,243.10. Funding for this project is from the AMFT Fund, and copies of the bid tabulations are on file in the City Clerk and Public Works offices.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept the lowest responsible bid from J. Johnson Paving in the amount of $76,243.10.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Director Colangelo, is there, there's a big difference between three bids and Peter Baker and sign, is there, is there an explanation or anything on that?
Yeah, I think some of the companies just want to show good faith by bidding. It's pretty much too much of a, too small of a job for them to take on, therefore, you know, like our Tiff project in larger level programs.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9E, consider approval of revived wage schedule between the City of Zion and Illinois FOP Labor Council Telecommunicators for time work from May 1, 2017 through the date of consolidation, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Per the contract that was in place with the dispatchers prior to the consolidation, we're required to negotiate a wage opener, excuse me, for the time work from May 1, 2017 through the date of consolidation. As a result of these negotiations, both parties have agreed to a 2% increase retroactive to May 1, and staff recommends approval of the attached wage schedule.
I'll make a motion that we adjust the, the wage to a 2% increase retroactive to May 1, 2017.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9F, consider approval of 2017, 2018 project year hotel motel tax grant applications for Director Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. As discussed about a month ago, we have a hotel motel tax grant program with the intent of attracting tourists to the area. This year, $34,000 was budgeted in the fund for the grant program, and $18,500 has been awarded to date, leaving $15,500 budgeted. We have received additional three applications and scored them accordingly, as you have in the packets before you. The first one, we'll probably take them all separately, but the first one is for the Zion Cycleery, that was the event that we talked about, and they basically went back, rescored, addressed some of our questions. You have that before you, and based on their grant request of $2,500 for the bike race, we recommend approval not to exceed $2,500 for marketing as presented in the application.
We're going to take these one at a time. Is there a motion on the Zion Cycleery grant?
I'll make a motion that we approve $2,500 for Zion Cycleery. All second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Teen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. I would like to say that I think that, I'm not sure how many hotel motel rooms this is going to fill the first year, but I think it's a, a program that we want to certainly encourage, because it looks like it could be really, really great, and it can really build.
There are a lot of people in the company.
Right, it can really, really build, and just hoping that this will help you get it off the ground.
That's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is GPT Enterprises, DOD.
We actually have two, I'm, I'm going to look at these together, and we can discuss as needed, but we have GPT Enterprises for the Dungeon of Doom, and we also have GPT Enterprises for the Edge of Escape. They are separate events, and there are applications for $10,000 each. However, our grant application, because they're under the same federal ID number, it is treated as a single corporation, we had not, when creating the program, anticipated that a entity would apply for separate events throughout the year under the same, the same ID number, so this was a, a first for us. But the way the grant outline is, we do have a maximum set on it for, for an organization of $10,000. That being said, I would, based on the scoring of both the events, I would recommend the approval not to exceed $10,000 for total marketing as presented in the application, but have that be flexible to use for marketing of either event, based on what the organization sees best for their needs and encouraging tourists to the area. If we did want to exceed, or if we did want to grant the additional $10,000 as applied for, we would also need an additional, a motion to go over the $34,000, or a budget amendment to go over the $34,000 that was budgeted. There is about $140,000 fund balance in the hotel motel tax funds, if we did want to utilize that, but that, that total would exceed what we currently budget for the grant program, and that we could, if it was desired, counsel for the next round of applications amend the, the grant application, should we want to authorize this for, based on an event basis rather than an organization basis.
Do we make a budget amendment every time a line item goes over budget in the city?
No, we, we could just, I mean, we could just go over budget, and we'd have a deficit for the year when compared to budget. It's sometimes cleaner just to get a budget authorization or a budget amendment there.
We don't have to do that tonight.
No, no, we don't have to, and it's not even required, but I just want to make sure that you know that we did, we would be going over budget in that line item.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I have a question. So they're representing that this amount of $10,000 is 2% of their marketing budget. Is that, is there somebody from GPT here?
Yes, there is.
Is that, is that your total operating budget, or is that your marketing budget? This is 2% of your marketing budget?
This is 2% of our marketing budget, yes.
I just don't see that in the profit and loss that you've given there.
I'm sorry, the $10,000 for the Dungeon of Doom is specific to the marketing budget of, of the Dungeon of Doom was $100 and some thousand dollars, right? So that would be 10% of the marketing budget. It's 2% of the gross sales is what that, that marker is.
Okay, so not your marketing budget, it's 2% of gross sales.
Gross sales, correct. Our marketing budget was, I believe, if there's a line item over there for $104,000, kind of at the top section.
I don't immediately see it, but I'll, I'll...
No, what we have here is only the other funding sources, the other, so it's like the second page, but, so it's cut off like halfway through on the profit and loss statement.
So basically, the 2%, is, is from the sales, is from the sales. So we marketed about $104,000 in 2016.
So it's about 10%.
So it's about 10% of our marketing budget, but a significant amount, yes, a significant amount of marketing goes into the Dungeon of Doom, and we do generate a lot of traffic for that event, which has led into us generating the Edge of Escape rooms, which is a really nice add-on that we have that goes on all year long. We have been working with the hotels in order to be able to bring in traffic. We've also had a feature where we're actually putting the escape room as part of the hotel ticketing, so when they purchase a, a ticket at the, or when they purchase a weekend at your hotels, they're adding the value for an Edge of Escape room, and they're doing that in order to try to bring more traffic, so.
So you want to amend this, then, to say it represents 10% of your total marketing budget?
Yes, I mean, we, yes, we could, we could do that, I, I, yes. It would be 2% based off of the sales, okay?
That's my question.
That was your own question?
What's the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion?
So our two options are to either, one, $10,000 across the board for both events, or approve to go over and make it $20,000. Correct. Okay, so that's essentially what we're talking about. But allowing them the flexibility to use the funds for, for either event. Well, if we did the $20,000, it would be 10... 10 for each. Right. But we just cap it at $10,000 and stay in line. Right. I'll make a motion to keep it within $10,000 for both events.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
No.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
I want to give him $20,000, so now I don't know how to vote.
Item 9G is consider accepting a FEMA slash DHS Safer Grant for Fire Department for Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last year, we applied for Department of Homeland Security Safer Grant, which stands for Staffing by a Fire Emergency Response. On July 26 of this year, I received a phone call from United States Congressman Brad Schneider, informing me that City of Zion has been chosen as, as the recipient of the 2016 Safer Grant in the amount of $483,960. This will allow us to hire additional operational personnel, which are defined as a position within a primary assignment of fire suppression support and FPA 170 compliance. We understand it may take several years to get to the point where we would be at appropriate staffing. Our acceptance of this grant is just another step forward in getting us to, to that goal. The total grant project cost based on hiring three firefighter paramedics is $784,000, including salary and benefits. The amount of funding provided to the City of Zion for hiring these firefighter paramedics is 75% of the usual cost for the first year at the time of the grant application, 75% the second year, and in the third year, 35%. Over the three years, the city would be, for $380,000, $840,000, with federal share being the $483,960. During the three-year grant period performance, the City of Zion is required to incur no layoffs within the Fire Department, fill all Safer funded positions, and maintain the operational staffing level existed on the date of the award. I respectfully request that Council accept the Safer Grant in the amount of $483,960 to cover salary and benefits for three firefighter paramedics for a period of three years, and to contribute the required cost matching amount of $300,840 over the same period.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Safer Grant.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question, Chief Lewis, so I'm anticipating this to be the case, but if we did find ourselves in a situation where we, we had to resort to a layoff, what would that mean for the Safer Grant?
Well, means you can't.
So does that mean we have to give back?
You would basically have to give back the money.
The entire amount.
The entire amount.
Okay.
And then have a justification for why you're doing that.
Can I add something to that? We ran into a similar situation with the cops, which, at that time, and I don't know how your grant works, we worried that they would have met in a grant.
So you retain whatever you get?
Well, we got the layoffs, but we were able to retain the funds by rehiring employees, and rehires, and certain new hires. I don't know if that would apply to this, if they ran into that situation.
I don't know. Safer Grant laws are rules, I should say, or direction, where it all changed year to year. So last time we did a Safer Grant, there was a no cost match, it was a two-year grant. Now it's a three-year grant, there's a cost match, because it's just the amount of funding that's available to the Department of Homeland Security at the time they put the grants out.
So that's an actual stipulation in the language of the grant?
Yes.
So just another, an add-on question to that, so after the three-year period, is there a restriction that you have to still keep the staff on?
Nope.
For any period of time?
Nope.
So it's just for the three years?
Correct.
That's all you get?
And we can maintain our current minimum staffing, it says at the current level.
Is that correct? We don't have to, we don't have to increase our minimum staffing?
Correct.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with the way we do our daily operations. It's just saying, right now, we have 24 personnel on shift, they'll select another three, and we maintain 27 on shift.
I, when I first got this, and I got your memo, chief, I, I choked on it, because I didn't realize that we were going to have to pay $300,000 for this grant, but, because Director Naval and I had a discussion about this a long time ago, and one of the things that I forgot that I would like to bring up is that what we did when we were budgeting is we were able, with anticipation of getting the Safer Grant, we cut our overtime by $60,000. So if we take $60,000 times three for the three-year period, that we'll be able to cut our overtime, that's $180,000 that we won't be spending on overtime, so that really the, the cost to the city from prior to getting the grant, our actual cost is going to be $120,000 over a, over a three-year period, so it's about, I, I thought I figured out at one point, it was about $45,000 a year for three firemen, with, with the reduction in the overtime, so it's even better than it looks here on paper. We have a motion in a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 10 is departmental commentary. The department heads have anything that they would like to add? Director Naval?
At the last meeting, we discussed the E91, E911 Emergency Notification System. We said we'd be coming back at this meeting to discuss the results of that. We are getting some quotes from some different vendors, and looking into different options. We contacted District 6 for their notification system. We're getting all the details on that, as well as looking at possibly partnering with some other communities that we might be able to get some volume by all being under the same system. So we said we're going to have a report back at this meeting, I just wanted to make sure that while there was nothing on the agenda, I gave that, and we'll be coming back in September with some results from all that research.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Item 11 is announcements, Thursday through September 29, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Zion Farmer's Market. I think the location is back on Sharon Road, is it not?
It's just offset.
Just two boulevards down, I mean, two open spaces down.
Yes. It's set back off of Sharon.
Yeah, it's not right on Sharon.
Well, right, 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 yeah. September 2, 6:30 PM in the Zion Queen Pageant. September 3, 8:15 PM is the Jubilee Day's fireworks. September 4 is the Mayors, and add his M-A-Y-O-R-S, plural, rather than possessive case, prayer breakfast.
Correct.
10:00 AM to 6:00 PM is Jubilee Day's Arts and Crafts Festival, and on September 4 at 1:00 PM is the Jubilee Day's Parade, and I'm, while I've got, while everybody's together, how do we want to do this this year? You want to do it the same as we did last year with individuals?
Yeah.
Providing their own vehicle?
We don't have a trolley, do we? Yeah, I didn't think so.
You have one, but it's not going anywhere.
No, we don't.
Yeah, I think individual.
Okay, and I will pass that on to Rich Walker, that we need additional space there. September 5 at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council. Item 12, we are in need of a closed session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two open meetings for discussion of collective bargaining and pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Let's remove.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
In a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?